So we'll get started. Sorry, I just need to open my e-spread. So we'll call the meeting to order and start with the land acknowledgements. So we acknowledge that we are hosted on the traditional lands of the Haudenosaunee. Normally, I know it by heart. Oh, there, thank you. Sorry. We acknowledge we are hosted on the traditional lands of the Mississaugas of the Anishnabe, the Haudenosaunee Confederacy, and the Wendat. We also recognize the enduring presence of all First Nations, Métis, and Inuit people. So next, we move to approval over the agenda. Could I get a mover and a seconder, please? Trustee Laskin, trustee Chair Noslin. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
That carries. Next is declarations of possible conflict of interest. If you have a conflict of interest, please declare it now. Hearing none. Item number four is delegations. So first up on our list of delegations is Anna Jessup from the Elementary Teachers of Toronto, speaking to the operating budget. So, thank you. So delegations are for five minutes. There is a timer on the clock there. I will give you a reminder when you're closing in on your time. And afterwards, there will be three minutes for trustees to ask questions of clarification.
Great, thank you very much.
Thank you, go ahead.
Hi, my name's Anna Jessup, and I'm a parent of a child in the TDSB. I'm a teacher in the TDSB, and I'm a former executive officer of Elementary Teachers of Toronto, which gave me an opportunity to see multiple schools, speak with teachers across the school board, and listen to some desperate principals confide in me about the position that they are in on a day-to-day basis. And I am here because I know that you are under tremendous pressure to pass a budget that will have cuts in it, because that's what budgets have these days. And I want to let you know how grave, how serious the situation is in our schools in terms of basic physical safety of our students due to understaffing and lack of resources. Because I believe that if you knew how dangerous it is, and by what a thread, a thin thread, the safety of our students hangs on a daily basis, most especially in schools that rely solely on public funding. And I'm referring to the schools that don't have wealthy parent councils, wealthy school councils. And the disparity is tremendous, and very often, the people who make the decisions come from schools where they don't see what it really looks like. So I want to paint a picture for you. I'm going to start by reading a letter that was written with the help of some education workers. "Toronto District School Board Trustees: Toronto Parents, Education Staff, and Students Are Sounding the Alarm That Our Schools Are Dangerously Underfunded. Insufficient Staff and Resources Mean That Students Are Undersupervised and Denied Basic Supports. A Multitude of Preventable Dangers Result From This, Including Increased Risk of Serious Physical Injury, Emotional Distress, and Violence for Those Students and Violence For Which Students Receive Undue Blame." And I just want to make a note, the fact that police officers have the kind of presence and are called upon so frequently to deal with violent situations in our schools is not a reflection on the students. It is a reflection on the dangerous levels of understaffing and the complete inability of principals to be able to access supply teachers and supply EAs when they're needed, which I will get to. Failure to hire enough staff means that when teachers and support staff are sick, there is often nobody to fill in for them. In the routine struggle to fill, absences in a school, special programs get canceled, oversized classrooms get merged, schoolyards and lunchrooms go undersupervised. And that's a bit of a euphemism. Children and youth cannot be expected to learn in a school that lacks the basic stability and safety that comes from proper funding. Racialized working-class students are made disproportionately vulnerable by cuts. Their families are least able to fill in the gaps with fundraisers to buy equipment and volunteer labor to provide supervision. Equity programs do not make up for or excuse the disparity between Toronto's most marginalized school communities and those with the most privilege caused by cuts to basic school operations. Due diligence to protect the safety and well-being of students is the most fundamental responsibility of the Toronto District School Board. We call upon the Toronto District School Board to develop a needs-based budget. This budget must be based on student needs as expressed by the TDSB students, school staff, parents, and guardians. In addition, it must address the results of a thorough and objective risk assessment. Do not pass any budget, or put your name or associate your reputation with any cuts, at least until you have done a risk assessment, because employees will not come to you and tell you how bad things are. It means disclosing the humiliating and the dangerous situations that they experience on a daily basis. You're not going to get an unfiltered account. If I had time, I would go through situations that I hear about, that I have seen. Do not put it on your reputation, put it on the government. In addition, it must address the results of an objective risk assessment of existing hazards to students' physical safety and mental well-being in TDSB schools. This needs-based budget must eliminate all unreasonable risks to TDSB students. And if anyone comes to you and says, "It's illegal not to pass a balanced budget," you say that it is your legal responsibility to protect the lives of students, because I will tell you that it is with chance and a roll of a dice and a great deal of luck already, that there is not a tragedy. Every day, there is a situation in just about every school that I'm aware of where the worst could happen.
Thank you, your five minutes are up.
Do the right thing.
Yes, we have questions of clarification. Trustee Laskin?
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. Can you clarify why you brought up wealth of school communities? You can't fundraise for staffing, you can't fundraise for resources. So what does wealthy school communities, what's the issue between, I mean, is school safety not an issue in all schools?
I think it is an issue in all schools, because I'm familiar with schools that I think would be identified as, you know, low on the LOI, meaning that they are in affluent communities. And I teach in schools that are not affluent. But here's what you need to understand, because if you're able to raise a lot of money for equipment and computers, I mean, I watched a snoozeling room, which is for students with developmental disabilities, get fitted in someone's school who I know really well. And I was just aghast, I thought to myself, I mean, this is basic stuff. My students don't get this. And once you have that money to pay for those things, well, then your school budget is liberated to get other things. Because you're not just scraping by to get the basics. And if you have labor, because obviously, labor is a huge cost. Well, working-class communities are called working-class for a reason. Parents are working two jobs. It's not because parents don't care that you don't have the same level of volunteer labor, it's because they don't have the time. They're working two, three jobs. And they don't get to staff a kiss-and-ride at their school. They don't get to staff volunteer labor, the lunchroom. Lunchrooms are getting, lunchrooms are dangerous. I mean, I listened to a principal beside himself say to me, "Look, I'm doing what I can. I can't get the staff. I know you're here telling me, 'We've got to get more lunchroom staff,' but where am I going to get them from?" Well, you see, in some of my friends' schools, they've got volunteers doing that.
Just a clarification, we're not to have volunteer lunchroom supervisors, so I'm not sure where that's coming from, but I'm not going to argue the point.
I could respond to that. Principals do things on a daily basis that break the rules to keep the children safe. To keep the children safe.
Are you finished, Trustee Laskin?
I have more questions, but I'm stopping, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much. Our next delegation is Hillary Hall from Dovercourt Public School Advisory Council. Go ahead, you have five minutes.
Thank you. My colleague Hannah wasn't able to be here today, but thank you for hearing me. I'm here from the Dovercourt Public School, my role as a member of the School Advisory Council, to enhance the accountability of the education system to all families. And we continue to fight as a council at the provincial level for adequate funding for education, and we're proud to be partnering with our neighboring schools in that effort. But the changes the TDSB proposed in response to the provincial budget will have terrible impacts at our school, and we believe similarly bad outcomes at other schools. Students will be left behind, teachers and staff will be overworked and burned out, and serious incidents will increase, and a safe and welcoming environment will be compromised. So for context, at Dovercourt, the cuts proposed mean losing the following positions: our part-time VP, a position that was reassigned in January 2023; our only full educational assistant position will be reduced to half; our current office staff allocation will go down; and potentially, we will lose our two special needs assistant positions. Or that allocation may happen at the last minute, causing us to lose the staff that have made positive connections with our students and families already. And our class sizes are increasing. I'm here today to make sure our priorities as parents and guardians are known to you as you set the TDSB budget, and we ask the TDSB to prioritize these positions and that classroom numbers across the system remain low as you continue setting the budget for the next year. Dovercourt's a grade school of about 400 students. At our school, we have many children who have special needs such as ADHD, ASD, ODD, or behavioral issues across all of our grades, and these needs have been identified by staff through assessment. These diverse needs deserve the support of consistent special needs assistants and educational assistants in our school. When our children get this support at the right time, we've seen how they began to thrive. We ask these positions to stay, and if anything, be increased, not reduced, in the board. Our intermediate class size is projected to be 32 next year, and in the fall, we understand these classes could go up to 35. Our school's old. It has literally become a challenge to fit this many teenage bodies into the classroom, much less to meet the needs of these students in a classroom of that size. We've also experienced a serious uptick in behavior issues this year, and our student council attended our parent council meeting and shared their concerns with us about this. Teachers, staff, and students regularly report that many students post-pandemic are having trouble with self-regulation, which affects the entire school community. This year, our school has experienced eight serious incidents that have resulted in suspension, and 37 office referrals of serious incidents where parent and guardian involvement was required. These figures reflect what's happening right now, with the supports in place that the TDSB is proposing to cut, like our vice principal and some of our office staff. When there is an incident in the school next year, how will it be managed with so few adults to respond? Similar to my previous speaker, for this school and other schools to remain safe and implement one of the TDSB priorities, we need more caring adults in the building. As you can see, cuts are leaving students behind. Our kids have told us loud and clear they need more support. Staffing cuts at local schools mean that our remaining educational and office staff will be overworked and burned out. So as you set the budget for the next academic year, we're asking you to emphasize keeping our staff. Kids need more support, support from all of us, not less. Sadly, we believe we are not alone in the challenges we face this year, and I think I heard that firsthand from my previous speaker. And we reject the position the province intends for parents and guardians, to fight with other schools within the TDSB to get access to the limited support and finances available. We will continue to fight for more funding from the province, because we know that you need it. We know that our school has the resources to mobilize parents and fight for our needs. We signed petitions, we collected letters, I'm here to depute. And we know, our SAC knows, that not all schools in need across the city are able to engage you in this way. How decisions are made about the allocation of vice principals, education assistants, and special needs assistants needs to be transparent, available to parents and guardians, and driven by demonstrated need in the school community. We will continue to fight for fully funded public education in this province, and we seek for this TDSB budget to support our kids as they continue their efforts to rebuild academically, emotionally, and socially. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Do we have any questions of clarification for the delegate? Trustee Dawson, go ahead.
Thank you, through the chair. Hi, Hillary, thank you so much for coming to make a delegation. I know that you have been doing some amazing work with eight other schools in Ward Nine, and I wonder if you could please elaborate a little bit more on some of the activism that you are doing with the province.
Thanks, Alexis. Yeah, we are working with these other schools to put together a petition to be delivered to the floor of the legislature. And minutes before this meeting, I connected with other parents here who are doing the same thing, and it's amazing, and we're going to work together, I hope. And some of the schools that are within that have also done actions at their school, big chalk mural art to gain attention. And we were out collecting signatures in person, which gave us an opportunity to talk to parents about what are the cuts that are happening at the provincial level, because it doesn't look like it in the media. They played a very good game with that. And then also, what we're trying to do as a school.
Thank you so much, and again, thanks for coming to speak today. Your words were very well said, thank you.
Go ahead, trustee McLean.
Thank you, and through the chair. I thank you, Ms. Hall, for your delegation and your advocacy, and we appreciate that. Can you clarify for me how you know how many suspensions were done at the school?
Yeah. At our recent council meeting, we asked the Safe and Caring, for an update on the Safe and Caring Schools Committee, and we asked our administration to report on how many incidents that happened at our school.
Okay, thank you. And you also shared, I think, that students have told you that they're in need of additional supports. Can you share how that was done?
Yeah, so there's maybe two ways I could speak to. So we had our student council come to our parent council meeting, and issues of this nature came up about what's happening in the school around behavior. And then as parents on parent council, we've heard from our own kids about supervision, what's happening at recess, wanting, my own son, I can say, was benefited from a withdrawal support when he was younger for a reading intervention, and is now integrated into the classroom. So losing any supports that help students thrive who may have diverse needs, some of those are the way they come out.
Thank you.
Thank you. And I'll also add, sorry, we have put out as part of this work, a request to our school community to tell us about the things that they're worried about being lost, like tell us a little more of their own story, in terms of what services they've accessed that really made a difference for their kids.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much for your delegation. Next, we have Karina Walsh and Jennifer Volk from various school councils. So go ahead, when you're ready, you have five minutes.
Hello, I'm Karina Walsh, mother of three at Brown.
Hi, I'm Jen Volk, mom of daughter Earl Grey in Riverdale and a former Franklin parent.
Together, we represent school councils for Brown, Earl Beatty, Earl Grey, Franklin, Hillcrest, Queen Alexandra, and Monona. Thank you for the opportunity to speak regarding the devastating impact that the reductions in aquatics staffing will have on our school and students. First, we want to acknowledge the grave issues facing the board during this budget cycle due to the provincial funding shortfalls. As school councils, we have called on the Ontario government to provide the funding as requested by the chair to achieve a balanced budget, and we will continue this fight. Many in our communities wanted to come and speak today. We have chosen, however, to come as a joint collective as we wish to be respectful of the committee's time. Although you will only hear two voices as you listen, please hear the voices of seven school councils and thousands of current and future students and families. This is not a broad discussion on the benefits of swimming, or whether swim programming should be maintained within the TDSB. That has long been settled. Rather, this is an issue about a group of schools, eight elementary and 12 secondary, who have had their aquatics instructor allocation taken away, such that they will no longer be able to provide a full-time swim program, and whose students will also suffer other consequences. Our seven schools are different in many ways. The grades offered, some are dual-track, some are model schools, some have board pools, while others have city pools, and the list could go on. But we are here today with a single message: Swimming is an important, valuable, and cherished part of our schools, and with these proposed changes, our schools will be devastatingly impacted and forever changed. On Friday, our principals were informed that the decision to reduce aquatics staff was made under the understanding that it would be done without reducing programming. However, after reviewing the collective agreement and status of pool maintenance projects, it was determined that this wasn't possible. To address this miscalculation or misunderstanding, and contrary to the basis upon which trustees approved the reduction, the swim programs at our schools will be decimated. In other words, a mistake was made, and now our students have been selected to pay for that mistake. This is not an acceptable process or solution. Taking away our allocations will have a significant impact on the physical and mental well-being of our students. We have heard from many, many families. For some, children are unable to participate in other sports due to medical conditions. For others, this is their only chance to receive instruction. In other cases, schools are providing students with exceptional need swimming twice weekly, giving countless benefits. But what is even more devastating is the impact that this will have on mental health and well-being of our students. Students have suffered disproportionately during the last three years, and severely hindering a favorite part of school life will weigh heavily. Imagine our kids walking by fully maintained, empty pools, longing to swim, only to find paid programs running after school that they cannot join?
Outside of the impacts on our children, the proposed unassigned or twinning models do not make sense for a number of reasons. First, there will be the full cost of maintaining these pools, although these valuable assets will sit significantly underutilized for much of the year. This is not responsible stewardship. Second, these unassigned staffing positions will be difficult and unappealing to instructors, and therefore, hard to fill. And third, it fails to recognize the importance of instructor-student relationship. Moving instructors between schools and facilities with the potential of teaching 800-plus students will not be as effective or safe. All this while some schools, without an operating pool, retain full aquatic staff allocation. We do understand that not all schools have pools, and we appreciate that we are very fortunate, but where they do exist, we should use them fully. The identity of each school is different, and for our school, swim has been a key part of the school identity for decades. Some of our schools have significantly less outdoor space than the board averages. While a pool is not a substitute for green space, failing to use the pools available fully further compounds this issue, when instead, we should be trying to find more ways to help our students stay active. We also cannot understate the contributions of aquatic staff in our schools outside of instructional swim. Competitive swim, which can only be run through dedicated coaches, is extremely popular in our schools, and losing these swim teams will be devastating. However, the loss will not be limited to swim. Aquatic staff also act as first aiders and run many other extracurricular sports teams that will also be lost. We believe the process to date has been gravely flawed. The original proposal was based on incorrect facts. Trustees and principals were told that the reduction in staff would not impact programming. And now, every few days, we are receiving different information about what the model will be and how it is to be executed. The result is a profound impact to our swim programs, beloved staff, and our schools. The far-reaching detrimental consequences of this proposal are significantly disproportionate to the cost of the additional allocation that will be required to maintain the programs as currently intended. We implore you to find a solution that maintains current programming and seize the reinstatement of two full aquatics instructors at each of our pools. Thank you very much for your time and consideration.
Thank you very much. Do we have any questions for the delegates? Trustee Earhart, go ahead.
Hi, thanks so much, and thanks very much to the delegates. My child was sitting on my lap while I heard the delegation. My child's very fortunate to go to a school with a pool, and thought that this was terrible, and that I should tell the committee that swimming is the best part of the day, and it's terrible that some kids could lose their swim programs. So I'm conveying that along with my question, which is just, I know that many of the councils that have come together to delegate here are also advocating for broader supports to the TDSB, in line with the calls of the TDSB around pandemic-related expenses. So I'm just wondering if the delegates could chat a little bit about how you came together and how these schools are advocating more broadly for supports as well. Thanks so much for your delegation.
We definitely understand that talking about swimming and something that only impacts a small number of schools, when there's lots of trustees who may not have pools in their board, we're cognizant of that fact. We came together because this is one issue that we felt strongly about and that we felt was, needed to be raised, because of how it was managed and the disproportionate impact that it would have on our schools. But we are also fully committed to doing everything we can as school councils to address the bigger issues that face the board. And every time we join with other schools and talking with Hillary before, new ideas. So, you know, there's things, I don't know, like, you can talk about the things that...
I'm part of a group, East End Parents for Education, which is pulling together East End parents to do various actions. We've had a rally, we are having a phone zap tomorrow, calling MPPs. And then we've joined with the school group, so we're expanding our reach into different parts of the city as well. As we say, we just met Hillary tonight, we're going to connect with her and join the West End in with us as well.
Okay, thank you very much. Thanks for bringing this to the attention of the board, and also for all the important work you're doing on behalf of all of our schools.
Thank you very much. Our next delegate is Jeff Lawton, grade three French immersion teacher at Brown Public
Great, thank you. As you just heard, my name is Jeff Lawton, and I'm a teacher at Brown Junior Public School. Perfect, nailed it. Thank you, first of all, to all of you as trustees for your work in advocating for our students. I do greatly appreciate the hard work that you do. Some of you may have seen, and as we just heard, last week, the Brown staff wrote a letter to the chair and the director of the TDSB regarding the recently enacted cuts to aquatics programming in our school and in seven other elementary schools. In that letter, we talked about the impacts of abruptly learning about the imminent loss of our two beloved aquatics instructors, and with them, the Brown Panthers aquatics program itself. Less than a month after wrapping up a city finals swim meet, they received notices that they had been declared surplus. A city final swim meet where these coaches dedicated countless hours to planning and to training and supporting student athletes, ultimately taking home five banners. And then, surplus. Since last week, there has been an outpouring of support, both for our two veteran swim instructors, as well as the program in a broader sense, which you have heard and you will hear. I'm here today to reiterate my strong belief in the value of the swimming program and to strongly urge you again to reconsider the decision. First off, let's just be clear, the need for extracurricular sport and opportunity for physical activity and mastery in schools post-pandemic is self-evident. We owe it to our kids to provide them as many opportunities as possible to get active and involved in school going forward, and cutting the aquatics program would be a step in the wrong direction. The challenging decision to cut aquatics, it appears, was in fact not a decision at all, but instead, an accident of accounting for how a policy would play out in practice. However, the result is that students at our school will lose over 10,000 cumulative hours of swim instruction per year. A loyal 23-year member of our staff will be working elsewhere and taking within the knowledge and experience he has of the facility itself, as well as the thousands of students and their siblings he has taught over the years, not to mention the relationships he has built with parents and the community at large. The following teams will also be losing a coach, water polo, football, track, basketball. Even if this committee and the board decide to bring back a swim program in name, but only fund it to the level required for the twinning model, so much would still be lost due to the demands placed on educators who would then have to teach two separate .5 positions involving significant commute time between each of them. Now, we of course understand, as was discussed at length in the March 29th meeting of this committee, that the board was facing a significant shortfall in funding, and that the aquatics program was accidentally cut due to the board seeking, quote, "a more economical and fiscally responsible way of allocating aquatics instructors." It also is important to understand, however, that these decisions to cut positions held by trusted adults at our school are not happening in a vacuum. On this note, Brown is also facing the loss of our vice principal, a dedicated EA, and is always seemingly on the verge of losing a librarian, an ESL allocation, and vital office staff. Director Russell Rollins said about these decisions in that meeting that, quote, "Staff Director Russell Rollins said about these decisions in that meeting that, quote, "Staff have done everything in their power to minimize the impacts to students and will continue to do so throughout the budget process and beyond." Unfortunately, however, these impacts seem to have not been minimized at our school. Furthermore, board staff indicated that, quote, "The reduction of aquatics instructors will be done through attrition," end quote. Again, this is not the case at our school. Our swim instructors themselves are each a few years from retirement. However, surplus. I understand that most of you do not have schools with pools in your ward and thus may see a school aquatics program as a, quote, "nice to have" that can be cut back in times of financial stress, manufactured or otherwise. However, allow me to make two comments on this possible train of thought. First, as an urban school, we do not have significant green space outside, nor a ball diamond, nor other similar facilities. The pool, in my opinion, fills the gap in that area as another space for physical activity. Secondly, while I may not ultimately be able to convince you that the school is, that the pool, sorry, is anything more than a nice to have, let me ask you about some other areas of education that are being cut, like special education, vice principals. Are these also considered nice to haves? If these cuts become normalized, what will be the next nice to have to go out the door when there are further budget pressures? In sum, these cuts in totality will have a further real negative impact on the quality of education that our students receive, and it is imperative that the board and this committee find a way to maintain these critical positions as well, all of them. Finally, to address an elephant running in the room, I also understand the TDSB is essentially being asked to do the dirty work of the province here. It is them who decided to end the COVID learning recovery funding, even though one would think that the recovery funding from a pandemic would have lasted at least as long as the pandemic itself did, but alas. I've of course written to the premier and the minister of education, specifically citing their $2 billion provincial surplus last fiscal year. I've asked it to delegate at their meetings, but I have not heard back. As I'm a teacher living in a ward that, or riding that hasn't gone conservative since 1975, I am certainly not holding my breath. However, in conclusion, I urge you to reconsider the decision on the aquatics allocation and to further press for increased funding to be able to avoid the cuts made to so many other areas. COVID learning recovery funding is over, but the recovery itself is not, and we owe it to students to support them.
Good timing. Thank you very much. Do we have any questions? Trustee Laskin?
Thank you very much for coming to speak, and we've read, at least I've read, all the letters, the Google Doc with the 109 pages from students, including their artwork and their words from the heart. I just want to confirm with you this decision. Is it your understanding that this was a decision of trustees to cut school programming?
My understanding through myriad conversations is that the decision, as cited by the associate director who presented the budget, the agenda item at the meeting, was that basically there's 93 positions, we only really use 80, we can get away with cutting 13, and there will be no impact to programming, and it will only be through attrition. Ultimately, through the labyrinth of collective agreements and board policies and things like that, it turns out that whoops, that isn't how that's going to turn out, and as a result, at least two, if not eight, very experienced aquatics instructors were declared surplus last week, two weeks ago.
Thank you for confirming.
Okay, thank you very much for your delegation. Next, we have Jason Persick, also from Brown Junior Public School, grade five, six homeroom. Go ahead, you have five minutes.
Okay. Hi, my name is Jason Persick, and I've been on the TDSB board for four years now. I wanted to talk about my experience from both sides, both as a student growing up as well as what I see as a teacher, to paint a picture of the impact of the ongoing cuts that have been happening in our education. I'd also like to address how additional cuts to special education, support staff, and aquatics can have negative consequence to our students going forward. I grew up with a learning disability, and I couldn't speak until I was five years old. I was developmentally delayed. I was fortunate to have some amazing special education teachers and staff that helped me catch up on my language as well as provide me ongoing support that helped shape who I am. There used to be this incredible program called the Metro Language Program, which unfortunately was cut in my fifth grade. However, the work that they did, not only to me, but to my friends growing up, who I still have contact to this day, was profound. And it would not be an exaggeration to say that if it weren't for the amazing teachers and staff back then, I probably wouldn't be here today. As an educator, it's disheartening to see how the special education has become a skeleton of what it used to be. Despite what could be said, there are still staff members that can be huge help that are now being cut. Educational assistance, for instance, helps students that need support, whether that be behavioral needs or those that require extra attention. Especially in a year where I taught grade two, three, an educational assistant and I worked so much together and achieved so much with a class where a third of them had learning disabilities. Some of these amazing achievements would not have been possible to do alone. Then there is aquatics. So much has been said about the need to provide students with opportunities, physical exercise, to provide for their mental health post-pandemic. Yet, very shortly after a major pandemic, we are making cuts and denying opportunities for students that do so much to help in these areas. I was a student at Deer Park, and swimming was mandatory over eight years. And I'll admit, I wasn't crazy about it at first, but as I got older, as an adult, I see the value of swimming has made in my life and also the lifesaving skills that came with it. And the students that I grew up with took what they learned from these amazing programs and applied it to swimming facilities and to apply it to become lifeguards in the future to give back. Even back then, I could see the great value that was provided to many of these students growing up. As a teacher, I see things from a different lens. I see students that may not excel academically in language and math or various other subjects, but swimming is their thing. It is the thing they take massive amount of pride in, makes them feel part of the community. The cut in allocation and the change to our school now having to share instructors will break our program. This is taking away beloved staff who have worked at the school for over 30 years, who have built great rapport with the students, who provide consistently, who provide extracurricular for weeks at a time, lunch and after school, who have contributed to students' fitness, endurance, safety, and well-being. If they now share instructors, this consistency will be broken. Extracurriculars opportunities for students will be lost as maintaining that weekly consistency will not be able to happen, and their knowledge of student-specific needs, incredible wealth of experience in their field, is also crucial to ensure that these students are safe, especially in something specialized, in an activity where safety is so important to be left with professionals in the field. In the TDSB document for school-based staff allocation, there states four major strategic directions, and the recent cuts, in my opinion, contradict these statements. One strategic direction talks about providing equity of access to learning opportunities. How is it equitable to remove important staff members that know these schools very well and provide do so much for these students with special needs? To cut down the amount of opportunities to join teams or participate in activities that can help their health and well-being, many of which are trusted adults for these students that are well-known in these schools? Another strategic direction in the document is to allocate human financial resources strategically to support student needs. Yet, very shortly after a major pandemic, where students have so many learning gaps, observed by many educators and myself, we are removing trusted adults for many of these kids, removing staff that help students with special academic, social, and behavioral needs. I strongly encourage this committee to take the time to reconsider the recent cuts being made to special education staff, support staff, such as educational assistance, as well as aquatics, as the impact that it will have on our students, especially right after a major pandemic, could really hurt in the long term. Thank you very much for your time and for listening.
Thank you. Do we have any questions for the delegate? None online? So thank you very much for coming to speak to us today. And next on our list is John Weatherup from Toronto Education Workers, local 4400. Is John online?
Hello, can you hear me?
Hello, John.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, yeah, this is John Weatherup from Toronto Education Workers, local 4400. Hello, can you hear me?
Hello, John.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay. Okay, yeah, this is John Weatherup.
John, can you turn off your live?
Hold on one second. Okay, yeah, it's John Weatherup here from 4400, and I'm here to talk about two things, the swim programs at several Toronto elementary and high schools. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you. Go ahead.
Okay. Yeah, so I'm going to be quick on the swim programs, and then I'll spend a couple of minutes on the spec ed report that's before you today. The parents of Brown and Earl Gray and other teachers have spoken about the swimming pools. I've been around the swimming pool program fight for a number of years, originally with Margery Jackson, who threatened to close the pools unless Mike Harris kept the funding open. I was around with David Crombie and making splash with the, we put the, 4400 put $100,000 into saving the swimming pools, and at that time, the Liberal Government put in $15 million to keep the pools open. And so at this time, we're seeing it again with these programs at several schools and high schools, and the same arguments raise their head about equity across the system. There's not pools in all the schools. As everybody knows, there's not baseball diamonds, football fields, food programs, all different types of programs across our system. They're not in every school. The swimming programs provide for swimming in the province, which has the most lakes and water probably than anywhere in the world for student safety, as well as the delivering programs every day for students to enjoy, whether it's team sports or taking up swimming in the day. I don't know, we keep referring to the collective agreement language that's in our contract. When you read the notes from the board on why they did this, and that's under notes of the meeting that they originally dealt with the allocation, it was dealing with there are a number of pools annually that close for renewal and maintenance, and that they would be able to cover it that way. So we have a simple request for the board. The board do not make these cuts or any cuts, but in particular, right now, we're speaking on the swimming pool cuts to put them back in. Also, they should have an impact study on what's happening, because this is only the tip of the iceberg. The board has not been able to hire swim instructors on a temporary basement for replacements, so these pools will even be closed more often. And even more insidious is special ed pools are being closed for the same reason. The board needs to reinstate these positions to ensure the programs can run, and they also need a strategy to bring staff in, because you need to have two people on the pool deck while having these programs run. So I agree with all what the parents said about the importance of the programs, the importance of swimming, and this has been fought over a large number of years. We stand beside them, and if the board reversed these cuts, B, they look at a strategy to make sure that these programs are, will carry on and have proper staffing, and in particular, in spec ed schools, which are not listed in here. So I just thank you on the swim programs. And on the special education, wanting, because I know I'm running out of time, is special education and inclusion and the data. I just want to say that special education inclusion, if you're going to have inclusion in our schools, you need to have proper staffing. And currently, we do not have the proper staffing in spec ed. And there's a number of things in this report that, it's a special and inclusion service level battle for 2022, 23. One of them, when I look at where we fit across boards in the GTA, we seem to be at the bottom of most categories. I know the nice colored lines show in the report that, you know, it's all within certain percentages, but we rank almost in every category, either the last or second last category, and it looks like we may be better than the provincial average. I'm not sure how that works, but in the GTA, we're not doing that well. Some of the things that you may want to ask, there's 1,300 and something special ed, sorry, safety plans in our school. The report here talks about 87 health and safety concern forms. Just for information, there was 1,300 violent incidents last year, and these are in the, mostly in the special ed programs. These are students who are not, this is not blaming the students for their behavior or blaming students or anything, this is the lack of staff we have in place to deliver on those safety plans. And when I say 1,300, that's reported violent incidents. There is probably double that amount, and that's for QB 4400 only. So we've asked that you, when you're looking at these reports and cuts to special education, that you read this. The other thing that should be highlighted is that they're using spec ed staff to cover off or general supervision and removing them from instructional time for spec ed students, which is totally inappropriate, and I think is a violation of the spending money on special education. So as I look through this report, I find it disturbing, and I want to talk about, the violent incidents we're talking about are serious violent incidents. The most recent violent incident, we had one of our members stabbed, their arm, another one's arm broken, and a third one had their arm slashed. So these incidents are not all the same. They go from verbal abuse all the way through to other types. So on the health and safety, and if the ESIAC committee wants any support, we would more than willing to provide them the information. And the last thing I'll say is risk assessment, the Ministry of Labor is ordering the board to put risk assessment in across the board for safety reasons.
John, your time is up.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Do we have any questions for the delegate? Okay, thank you very much, John, for coming to speak to us today.
Thank you.
So I will note that there are also two, yes, two written delegations that have been submitted for trustees to read through. And our next item on the agenda, sorry, is the reports from community advisory committees, and 5.1 is from the Alternative Schools Advisory Committee. So who is speaking to this?
I believe I am.
Oh, do we have the co-chairs?
Yes.
Oh, okay, Jacob, you're here? Yep. Please go ahead.
Thank you. For housekeeping, I just, well, first of all, let me introduce myself. I'm Jacob Leibovich. I am the elementary co-chair to the ASAC committee. I want to thank you for hearing us out today. I just wanted to start with housekeeping. In the minutes included in your package, hold on one sec, let me just make sure I can actually read my notes.
Thanks, everyone.
Good night, everyone.